Is your microphone on? Yes, it is. Just a skew. And it's going back that way. Ms. G, would you please call the roll? Mr. John. Ms. Hockenberry.
Here.
Mr. Meeks.
Here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Ms. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Teeds.
Here.
And Mr. Wodyskis, absent this evening. I'd like to call for a motion to adopt the agenda or make a change if anyone has suggested change.
I shall move.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries to adopt the agenda. Are there any planning commissioner reports?
I'll just mention that Ms. Hockenberry and I were at Bzzazzle's Ribbing Cun on Friday. So, I was really excited seeing another business in the city open up and
Absolutely.
They had some of the best food I've ever seen at a
Ribbing Cun?
Yeah.
Darn, I knew I should've gone.
The ladies made everything themselves and it was quite lovely. But anyways, it's just nice to see another business open in the city.
It's a beautiful store inside, too. And then Rob Meeks and I were at a community gathering over Winter Hill, Cherry Hill, on the Harris Teeter project on Tuesday.
And just remember, there was that watershed meeting on Thursday that I attended that. And just that's basically just talking about how we're going to follow through and do all the things we have to do to meet Chesapeake Bay and also to keep our storm drains from collapsing. So, fun stuff.
Did you get a good feeling about it when, after you learned everything?
Actually, I think so. I mean, I was on the watershed advisory committee, so I know the plan pretty well. Got a good feeling from the audience that they recognized that we might, we really do have to have an enterprise system for it. We already have an enterprise system like for the sewers and the water system. And there were some people who said, you know, "I already pay taxes, why can't we do this out of the taxes?" But I think they did a really good explanation about why there needed to be dedicated money that was set for that. And some, you know, people made some good points, said if you knew that was what the money was for, that was the only thing the money was going to be used for, there's some comfort in that, that you know exactly what's going to happen with it. And, you know, like most municipalities in the country, we are hitting a deadline on the age of a lot of our storm drains and we're going to have to start replacing them now. And, you know, someone asked why we weren't replacing them over 30 years, but part of the problem is that they don't need to be replaced until they need to be replaced.
Right.
And it would be, we would never go in and replace a storm drain that wasn't at a point where it needed to be replaced yet. Unfortunately, we put a lot of them in at the same time. So, you know, they're aging out of the next five to 10 years. Anyway, so it was a really good meeting and there was a lot of good input and it was fairly well-attended. I mean, the room was full.
Oh, good.
Good.
It's always good to hear. Are there any petitions from the audience on things that are not on our agenda? Seeing none?
I have a speaker slip, but the person who filled it out earlier today is not here.
I will, is that for something that is not on the agenda or just a speaker?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, we'll move on to the planning director's report. Mr. Snyder?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. You have in front of you the monthly report. We've developed a new format. Garrison Kitt, our planning staffer who's up here with me today, has developed and we think it'll be a more useful way of people being able to review the numbers. So, we'll be doing that throughout 2013, trying to put them all in one place. We've been very busy. I think I mentioned to you last time that one of our staffers had an accident and is still out and will be on extended leave. We're going to be interviewing some temporary help to help fill that gap and, but it will be, his skill set was, is very vital to our group. So, we have been continuing to be very busy in terms of development activity. And of course, as you know, we're working on several large projects. The Lincoln Project, which is going to be coming forward to boards and commissions, and the Harris Teeter Project, which is still being talked about by the city council and which you had a work session on last, last week. Looking ahead, you have on your, on your, on your dais there, the latest copy of the South Washington Street corridor plan. It's a draft that we'll be talking about this evening and hope to have a good discussion about this. We're looking forward then to a, a session in April with the public to talk about the draft plan. And we have been talking about the 20th of April. And Deborah, did you, there was a possibility it might be shifted to 27th?
We had definitely reserved the Columbia Baptist Church Fellowship hall for Saturday, April 20th. At our request, they told us that there was availability on the 27th of April, but we have not yet received written confirmation of that date.
So, it's possible it could be on the 27th, which is the following Saturday, which might be a little better from a scheduling point of view. But nonetheless, in April, and we would have, as we had with the North Washington Street Plan, a community meeting to talk about some of the results of the draft work and get feedback from the community. There also would then be going forward to other boards and commissions for comment and of course, input from the planning commission and city council toward hopefully a public adoption, you know, late, late spring, early summer. Then June 1st, we're hoping to do a kickoff of the city center plan, and that's the area just to the north of, of this small area plan. And of course, there is linkage between them in terms of the land uses. So, we've done a little bit of thinking about city center in this plan, which when we have our work session, we'll talk about in more detail. Also, in front of you, we have a, a draft bus shelter plan that our intern Paul Stoddard has been working on. We have a grant for $150,000 to put bus shelters in the city. And he's been working to try to figure out where is the best place to put those. We'll also be talking about that in our work session. But the, what we're looking to try to do is to place them in the best possible spots, be able to get, pick a shelter design that then could be implemented throughout the area. He worked last year, or last summer, I guess it was, with us when the 24-hour fitness building was being built to negotiate and get installed the, the new bus shelter pad that's on Broad Street. So, if you recall, that was one of the concessions in that site plan that the commission pushed for. So, we're looking to try to have a better place for people to be able to use public transportation. And he's done, he's gotten a great start on this, so we'll talk about that in more detail in our work session, but would love to get your input. And anyway, that's, that's other good work that's been done. We would hope we could then move more quickly to see if we can't get the funding for the, pick the design and get these things built and installed. So, those are, those are some of the highlights that we've been working on. Several of you, I think, have met Lauren Bruce, who is our other planner, who is, is on board. I do have a meeting this coming Thursday with the director of the Fairfax County Planning Department, Fred Selden. He's going to be coming over with one of his staff people to talk to us, do a little tour of the city, and we're going to talk about planning issues that on either side of the Fairfax Falls church line. Fred took over from Jim Zook, and he's a very well-regarded long-term planner with the county. And he's very interested in, in establishing regular discussions with us, and we're looking forward to that as well, so that we can talk about things like South Washington Street or, you know, where we have, where Seven Corners is being looked at, you know, revitalization, of course, Mount Daniels and issues. There are a whole host of things, including the boundary adjustment, that'd be good for us to be talking at, talking with them as a staff. And so, we're, we're going to have him and his, his other, one of his key people over and we'll do a little tour and lunch and talk about planning issues this Thursday. So, those are some of the things we're working on, both short-term and longer-term. And I also hope to talk to you a little bit about paper streets. We've done a look at the land use plan. There are a number of blanks that are on the land use plan, and Garrison has done some studies. We'll, we'll have some slides for you. There was a very good study done sometime back with some of you were part of in 2005, I believe, looking at where are the various pieces of open space in the city that, and what should we do with those? It's our opinion in looking at these that we should move forward and, and have them become open space if we need them for some other purpose that could be done at some later date. But presently, many of them are simply blank spots on the plan. And I think the last study that was done said these kinds of things need to be resolved. There was a very good study done, done by Mr. John Murphy, which outlined a number of these, which I've looked at, which I think is excellent and has a lot of, and many of the same things he identified in his report are ones that we've looked at. So, we'll, we'll go through that with you as well. Also, I am looking at determinations and how they're done. I'd like to put a, presently for residential determinations, there's not a fee. I'd like to propose that we have a fee that, maybe a thousand dollars or something to that effect. And then, there is a process by which information is gathered within staff, but I think it makes sense, I've talked to the zoning administrator internally, that we should have, if we get one of these, the fee should be paid, that should be announced. We can then, we have 90 days or something like that to circulate it, get the comments, let that be just looked at by various people, including the city attorney and the city manager, then before a final determination is created. And then that can be posted on the website, and then it would be there for people to look at if there are issues, they'd know it's there. And we can also, I think, put previous determinations on the website so that they're available to people because those are, you know, determinations trying to figure out what, what to do in certain instances. So, I think that would be a step forward in terms of transparency and in talking with the zoning administrator, something he would welcome as well. So, that's something I want to push forward and do. We're, we're also trying to update our website right now in terms of getting new members on. For example, Mr. Rankin and Mr. John, you're not on the website, but we're trying to get you on there. And so, we're, we're working with OCOM to update those kinds of things with all our boards and commissions. And Deborah G. and other staffers are reworking with OCOM to get that information up there. So, one other area we are investigating is looking at automation fee, which would help us perhaps do more of the electronic plan review that we've been doing, so we could be less paper-oriented. As you all can imagine, if you've seen our offices, we have a lot of paper with plans. We've done some preliminary work on some of the commercial areas in particular, these commercial plans. We've got kind of a pilot going where we're using digital plan review back and forth via email, and that has speeded up things. We'd like to take that further and have fewer paper documents, have digital backup. So, the COs and other documents would be available digitally. But it takes time, money, and effort to do that. Many groups, Arlington, Alexandria, and others, have an automation fee of about 10% that they use to afford those kinds of things, better computers, scanners, et cetera. So, we are looking at that along with our IT people and the assistant city manager, see if that might be a feasible thing to do next year. And it would help us be competitive as, with a small staff and be more responsive quickly. So, those are some of the things we're working on. Thank you for listening, and we'll, we can talk about those more in work session.
I have just one quick question. And it's about the April 1st. It says possible or it says anticipated. How firm is that date on, on the?
This is with city council for the?
No, it just says resolution to amend. I don't, I don't know who that's before. It's South, the South Washington Street project.
We have been talking, I think tentatively, a work session with the council to give them an update on where we are, has been set for that. Whether that date will hold or not, I don't know.
So, that's, that's a joint work session?
That would be a joint session to fill them in on where we are at this point. And of course, this, this being a major commission issue, we want to talk about it with you first tonight.
Okay. Yeah, right here.
Yeah. So, those, those things sometimes are very fluid, as you all know.
Right.
Appreciate everyone's flexibility.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't clear to me from how, how this was, the two resolutions were out there, but it wasn't clear whether it was a work session, an actual hearing here, or?
I think the thought is to give an update to councils to where we are with the draft plan. And hopefully, by that time, too, you all are, are become familiar with where things are and some ideas. We've gotten some feedback that could, you know, have some impact on what is presented to council because ultimately, commission, commission is, you know, the leader in this planning effort.
I don't know. This is, this is the, this is the resolution to amend the comp plan and to grant the special exception. So, I'm, I'm not quite sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That, that may be related to the Lincoln Project.
Right. That's what it is.
Presently, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
We've got their, the
You have a lot, a lot on the paper.
The Lincoln Project, one of the, one of the potential actions there is to change the master plan from business to mixed use in that site. It's presently Zone B3, and that's a suggested kind of action that could happen in addition to the special exception. Yes.
Right. So, i- is that something that we are going to be voting on that night, or is that a work session, or what is that? It doesn't say. It just says there's two resolutions.
I believe you would be then Let me just double check here.
Maybe city council is taking
No, their, their action, their, I think this is where you would be taking action.
We, so we would be recommending to the city council?
Elizabeth Perry is managing this. This is when you would be making your public hearing vote?
Oh, this is a public hearing? Okay. And, and so, it's unclear whether we would be doing just a hearing or whether we would be doing preliminary and final recommendation or?
This would be your, your recommendation prior to it going to city council. And I apologize, I was, one of the items we've had for April 1st is a possibility of a joint session with council to look at the South Washington Street plan, how firm that will be with them, I don't know.
Right, right. So, I, I didn't explain it properly, but thank you for the clarification.
Well, I didn't look where you were pointing.
Well, you couldn't see what I had circled.
I, I, I apologize to you, but thank you for making it clear to me.
Okay, any other? Melissa? Okay. Melissa?
And I know we just talked about this, but I'm going to bring up Van Buren Street again, 406 and 408, because as you remember, several months ago, when I was chair, we had a discussion here about this. And we asked at that time to hear if there had been any movement on it. And there was some movement on it, and we didn't hear about it until, actually, I was called by a neighbor to ask me if I knew what was going on there. Um, I just, real quick, just want to say, you know, we, I have the memo from May 2011 that our zoning administrator gave to Joey Rendell, the builder there. And he clearly delineated that if he split those lots, the second lot, which is now the 408, would be a corner lot because of the paper street there. That paper street is owned by the city and it's still a paper street. We've never changed the status of it. And Mr. Boyle even said in his memo, "It has been my interpretation, it's been the interpretation of my office to treat paper streets as having the weight and impact of a constructed street with regards to setbacks." Then sometime this fall, Mr. Boyle now has signed off for a grade-in plan that shows a house in there as if that paper street doesn't exist, as if that paper street is now a park. Now, I know it's not parked any, yet, because the planning commission has not done any type of action that would change that land use, nor has the council. And, you know, it takes a planning commission action and a council action to change the land use of a piece of property that's city-owned, like a paper street. And I do not believe that Mr. Rendell has gotten a variance from the BZA, because there's only two ways that we can change this paper street. He comes and asks the planning commission, the council, to change it from a paper street to park, change the land use, or he goes to the BZA and asks for a variance. I mean, he has two ways of trying to go around using this lot. But clearly, in May of 2011, he was told by his own administrator that if he split those lots, that second lot was not going to be easily buildable as long as that paper street existed. And he chose to split the lots, so there is no, like, surprise here. So, what, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, are we, are we going to expect to get from Mr. Rendell a request to vacate the paper street or change the land use of the paper street to a park? Or is he going to go through the BZA? Or, or is the, is the authority of the planning commission, the council, going to be usurped to change the status of that paper street? Because that's the only three options I see.
Well, there has, there has subsequently been another request for determination which reversed that. Some of it relates to the action on Cedar Street where in trying to save that old house, I think that property
Excuse me, I believe that Cedar Street, we had talked in the, in the comp plan about changing that to parkland.
And it
So, this, this, this paper street, we never have changed or even talked about changing the status in the comp plan.
I can, I think I can, I can explain that.
And, and also, there's a house on, you know, there was an incident on Cherry Street where they did not let them change the status of the paper street, or, nor did they allow them to change it into a street. So, there is
I can, I can
Present.
I think we can talk about that in more detail in our work session. There are, I mean, those are all good points. There are some nuances in terms of the differences between these, and I'll, I'll be happy to go through those with you in the, when we talk about all of these.
And I, and also, we had this discussion a few months ago when we brought it up the first time, where we said if there's going to be any kind of change or any determination, we asked to be informed, and we were not informed. Um, you know, I understand there's nuances, but I, this one is pretty black and white. We've never even talked about that paper street. And I believe it wasn't even when the Environmental Services Council on Open Space looked at paper streets, we didn't even look at that street. I, I don't think there's really been any kind of action on that street in any of the time that I'm aware of. So, I just don't think there's a nuance there. If he wants to have the house he wants, then he needs to either come and ask us to change that land use, or, or he needs to go to the BZA and get a variance. And if the determination has changed, then, then the authority of both the planning commission and the council is being usurped in regards to land use and city property. And I just, I, I'm astounded by it. And we can talk about it more later. I don't know if anyone else wants to talk about it now.
I think it also points out we need, and I think council's been, it's, it's being, it was scheduled earlier, it hasn't happened, but we, we're due to have a work session with council to try to put the whole split lot issue to a public hearing. And we've had our listening session. I think we know where the commission is on this and staff is, and resolution of that will, is important and will, it's another issue that needs to come to resolution.
And I agree, and I think that it'd be nice to look at the split lots, but I, this is a total different issue.
Well, it, until we actually get to look at, at the split lots and make a decision on that, and particularly with regard to vacating paper streets, is there, I'm, I'm assuming that since in our mind and in, in our actions and the city, lack of city council action, will, will that project be stopped until a decision is made?
Presently, I've got, I've held the permit, I've got the permit on hold for the, for the moment while we're examining this and looking at the broader issue of what to do with these paper streets. Actually, on our comprehensive plan, unlike Cedar Street, unlike Cherry Street, this actually doesn't show up as a street. It has no name on it, simply a blank place on the map. We have several of those. So, they're slightly different, and they, they are in plaits, old plaits, but they are not on our comprehensive plan. And that's one of the things we've been looking at as we, you know, drilled down and looked at these areas. We have these blank spots, which are, for example, Great Falls Street, which never went through. There is a blank place on the plan, which is the parking lot for Madison Park. It has no street name on our comprehensive plan, it's simply a white space on the plan. But it's presently used for parking for the park. So, we have several of these areas, which we'll go over in more detail, and they are, they are some of the nuance that I might mention. I think they need to be resolved. And that's partly what we're trying to do, is going back and look at the work that was done by the Open Space Committee. There was a lot of good work, but it never, it never was, much of it was never brought to conclusion. And that's one of the things that I think needs to be done. Same with split lots and some of these others. We need to bring them to, we need to make decisions and move on so we can, we don't have these vague areas.
Right.
And that's part of the problem.
Well, so, I was kind of following you up till there, up till the comprehensive plan. So, we were told pretty clearly that the comprehensive plan does not have the force of law. But it is my understanding that the zoning administrator's memo dated May 10th, 2011, would have the force of law, except when it doesn't, which would appear to be this case, because he's already put in a foundation.
There's some, there's a subsequent.
There's a foundation.
I, I don't think so. I think there's just a hole.
There's a hole with, there's no cement, but the fitting, the forms are in place, as if there could be cemented in the next hour.
Just waiting for the moment.
Wait, as it were.
Okay, well, I don't think we're going to come to any conclusions, so we can, we can talk about this at, after the meeting at our work session.
Okay.
Anyone, anyone in the audience who is interested in this particular issue, I invite you to stay for that conversation. Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Lindy, I didn't, okay.
Actually, this most recent talk about things we need to wrap up and get off our table, there's a few things along that line that we really need to, we're again being faced with the 14-foot versus a 20-foot setback on projects. We just need to get that thing under code, so we don't have to mess with it all the time. But the other thing I was wondering about is, since we've got the South Washington Street corridor plan, small, a small area plan going forward, we also have two major projects going forward within this plan. How do you plan on reconciling that kind of a situation with the, with the community meeting? With the, on, on the South Washington Street? How can you handle?
Well, well, we've been, we've been, we've been looking ahead at the planning as we've been talking with the community and the developer and particularly with the community in that area. And we think the plan that's proposed is generally consistent with the draft that's been developed. So, I, and that's one of the things I think certainly the commission will have the benefit of looking at, at, at this in advance of any decision on that project.
Okay. Considering the fact that the Lincoln Development Plan has been, will be coming out to boards and commissions as of last Monday night, and there were a lot of questions from some members of council as to land use and everything. So, I would strongly encourage for us to move forward, you know, dealing with this draft plan with council as soon as possible on it, because I think this could help answer some of the questions about land use in that area that are kind of still up in the air and maybe put to bed some of those comments along the way.
We agree. And I think, I think the, the coincidence of these is, is helpful. And as you know, we moved up the study of the South Washington Street area precisely because members of the commission
Right, right.
Had identified that there were properties that were going to be in transition and it would be timely to do so. So, that was a very good change in our plan for planning, if you will. And I think that, that these will work well as we go forward.
Right. And I think that particularly if going to council in a work session with this in light of the fact that we've got the two proposed development plans, but also, I know there was, there were a lot of questions concerning the land use in between
Mm-hmm.
From one, those developments down to the other, the Harris Teeter down to the Lincoln property. And I think that that could really help straighten out a few things along the way. And so, I'm very much looking forward to that. But again, back to that 14-foot versus 20, we've got to get that tied up. I'm part of it.
Thank you, Lindy.
Thank you.
Any further, any further comments or questions on?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Teresa Twiford, who signed up to speak for items not on the agenda, is now present.
Okay. Would you like to come forward and speak? Okay. Oh, we, we always need more. We love paper. We love paper.
Thank you.
Very nice. Okay, we, we can share.
Yeah, I have all that here.
Okay. And then if you'll go to the microphone and, and give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Teresa Twyford, and I live at 4014 Park Avenue. I have a property a few blocks from the East Falls Church Metro in the city. There's a portion of it in Arlington, but the access and the majority of the land is in Falls Church City. And I, for the past year, I've been just going through several scenarios, trying to think of the best possible development solutions for this property. And I would like for you to at least consider and to plant the seed. I understand that there's currently no mechanism for this concept of a cottage community, or bungalow neighborhood, or pocket community, as this architect has coined the term pocket neighborhood, but possibly in the future. And so whether or not it works for my particular parcel, that certainly remains to be seen. But I would like at least for it to be considered for city use in the future, that, that mechanism of, it's an infill type project that, in my opinion, is, could be very good for the community, thinking outside of the current zoning. And so, thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions now, or I can come back next session and get thoughts, so.
Well, we're certainly open to questions. I'd like to say thank you very much. This is something I've been following for a long time. I have clippings all over my office of pocket communities that have been built around the country. And I, I think Falls Church is a perfect place for it to be, so.
I think it is, too.
Yeah.
I think it could be a real gold standard for the DC area. I think it would be a real model, so.
So I, I hope you get someplace on this.
Madam Chair, there was also just an article in the real estate section of the Post about the green cottages built up in Germantown, along the same concept for affordable housing, but they were very definitely built, you know, for lead design and everything like that. So it was a very, very good article. I don't know if I still have it, but we could get links to it. But again, I think that this is something the smaller houses and everything could really help out in a lot of ways. I'm very happy to see this.
We, we did have a staff discussion with Ms. Twyford, an architect that she brought in, and it is an interesting concept. For the public, it's the notion of having smaller houses arranged on smaller lots, where you would have possibly specialized living, perhaps aimed at seniors, or, but at any rate cottage-type environment rather than very large houses. It would take ordinance amendments.
It would, or it would not?
I believe it would take an ordinance amendment. Possibly it could be done as an overlay or a special exception under an existing zone. It's not unlike the, what you could do in Arlington under the Cluster Ordinance, or the Unified Residential Development Program. But you'd have to, I think, develop, develop an ordinance which, which identified the goals and objectives of smaller house footprint, and, you know, closer, closer locations, complementary application of houses around common open space or, or pedestrian ways, and possibly collective parking, which is another feature of this, rather than every house having its own driveway and garage. I think in many of these designs, parking is collected, and the houses arranged around green space and pedestrian ways. So it's a very interesting concept, but it, it would be smaller homes, more in scale, with cottage-style development.
Well, if you, you remember, that was maybe not something exactly like this, but we did, the ZOAC Committee did, in their recommendations to city council, recommend that townhouses be allowed to be put on smaller parcels, rather than what we are now, what's now in code. And I think that was something that they had in mind, maybe not exactly like this, but they were moving that way. So that was a serious recommendation to council that has not been implemented, but it's something that we have been considering in the background for quite a while. Thank you for coming.
I always think of this parcel as in Arlington.
Well, the, the plat is two pages in on the booklet there, and you can see where the county line goes through.
So is it ours to zone, because the front door, because the, the entrance off the street?
It's presently zoned R1A.
It's, um, it's R10T in Arlington. So it's low-density multifamily in Arlington. It's, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's quite a good book and very interesting concept.
Any further? Okay. Okay, we will move on to old business, the comprehensive plan update. I'm thinking this is, it goes back to the memo that we got from Elizabeth for our homework.
Yes, Elizabeth is here.
I see.
Those of you, we have gotten some input, but we would love to get more, so kind of last.
Um, we can talk about it now, or we'll talk about it during the work session. Your preference, work session?
Well, we, we can talk about it briefly now, just so Elizabeth can, can hear.
Good evening, Elizabeth Perry with the Planning Division. As you indicated, we did have some input on the draft of Chapter One in the plan introduction from several weeks ago. And as indicated in the memo, I was happy to take any preliminary comments that you may have, so that we could put those together, and hopefully it would frame a discussion for a future work session. So I did receive two sets of comments that talked about looking at the brief history of the city, and ways to integrate that into the comprehensive plan, maybe not as currently in the comprehensive plan, but maybe as an appendix. How do we address the little city promotion and branding into our vision? How do we talk about the changes around us, including in Tysons? And how does that shape our vision? And how and in what ways with some of the boundary adjustments that the city will be facing? How would that impact some of the, the visioning that we have for the city, and specifically in the vision statement in Chapter One? So at this time, there's a lot on the Planning Commission agenda in the coming weeks, but it seems that a work session to talk about these items, so I can get some of your input, so I can move the chapter four to be appropriate, if it's, if there is an opportunity on the agenda. Are we happy to answer any other questions that you have?
Does everyone remember seeing the memo? And it would, I would encourage you all to look at it again and send your comments in, so that Elizabeth can proceed.
Did we want to work on looking at a potential work session date, so that we could have a discussion on those items?
We can do that, and we can, you and I and Deborah and the Chair can work on that.
Yeah. Is this the beginning of our comprehensive plan update? And then we'll move on to other sections as we go along through the year? Okay.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, we have none. So let's move on to the approval of minutes for February 4th. Have all the commissioners had a chance to look at the minutes? Are there any amendments to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the ninth, well, this says the 19th, and this says the 4th. So is it, it's the 19th, right?
That's correct.
It's the 19th.
Okay. I read it off the agenda. The minutes of Tuesday, the 19th of February 2013. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Do we have a motion to adjourns?
No, move.
Wait, I want to say one more. I knew, I knew you were ready.
Yeah.
We'd like to, I would like a motion to adjourn, so that we could follow this meeting with, with a listening session on the Greenway Downs subdivision.
So move.
Yes, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Realize we're going to do that. If you'd like to speak on the Greenway Downs subdivision?
The overlay.
Overlay? It says subdivision overlay.
The impact for the proposed.
So, anyway, if you'd like to speak on this subject, there are speaking slips in the back, so if you fill it out, it would be helpful to Ms. G, so that we're not trying to get your name and address from the, what you, what you're saying into the microphone. Are we ready for the staff report?
Yes. We're here to talk a little about the Greenway Downs subdivision overlay concept. The, the ZOAC report, which a number of you were on that committee, recommended that there be possibly a special zoning category for the Greenway Downs neighborhood here in the city. The suggestion was that possibly an R1C zoning district be developed. In looking at this and trying to follow up on, on that issue, staff concluded that an approach which would provide an overlay within the existing R1B zone would be the best approach. The Greenway Downs neighborhood was created, I believe, in 1920, and this is a map of the original subdivision that's on the screen. The average lot is 6,250 square feet, which is 1,050, 250 square feet less than the R1B standard of 7,500. The lot widths are typically 50 feet, whereas 60 feet is typically the R1B standard. And this subdivision was created before zoning, and it has a building restriction line built into the subdivision of 20 feet. And the R1B zone typically requires a 25-foot setback. So the result is that the way the subdivision was constructed and plotted isn't really consistent with our rules for the R1B. The suggestion of an overlay district to come up with a set of rules that would be more appropriate for this neighborhood, therefore was put together. And we're looking at the idea of allowing a front yard setback of 20 feet, rather than 25 feet, and allowing flexibility on side yards between 7 and 10 feet, totaling 17 feet, so that it would be possible to have driveways that we could go back to parking in the rear of the properties possibly, which is difficult to do presently. There's a lot of on-street parking, and on-street parking is, 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 there's not a lot of on-street parking available. We're also suggesting that the residential structures, when they're closer than 10 feet to the property line, would have fire-resistant materials, and that the overall building height be 30 feet rather than 35 feet. So there's a set of rules that's been put together as a draft ordinance. We went to city council, had a work session on that, also a work session with, with the Planning Commission. Council asked us to go out and talk to the neighborhood, get neighborhood feedback. We had a work session with the Architectural Advisory Board and some neighborhood representatives. And then as a follow-up to that, we put together a mailing list that Ms. G put out, and mailed to everyone in that neighborhood to come to this listening session, to hear what the people in the neighborhood think about this proposed change. Is it a good idea or not? Are there changes that would make more sense than what's been proposed? We also have some, developed some graphics, which we'll put on the screen now, that show how, how this could in fact work. This shows the, apologize for some of the glare on this, but-
Can, can everyone see?
Yeah.
Everyone see, because I was going to say, we could turn the lights out.
The, this shows how the buildings presently are sitting, existing buildings often are in, in, in front of, they require 25-foot setback of the, of the zoning category, rather they're following the building restriction line that was put in the deeds when the property was subdivided. This has made it difficult for one-story houses to have a second-story addition, required variances which are difficult to get. And so, and many of the houses were built when materials were scarce, and so some of them are mason, concrete block construction, different people have done different things in terms of siding and construction. This shows a typical block, and with, with some of the existing building styles, some with additions. Can we go to the next one? Go to the one that showed, do we have, okay, this shows how you would be allowed possibly to have a, some variation on the side yards, be able to build front porches, and allow homeowners more flexibility to add on to or replace their houses. The, the ordinance as proposed also says that a new house which has a garage, could only have a one-car garage with a limit, I believe, of 10 feet in width, because what we want to avoid is the whole front of these lots becoming a two-car garage. We'd like to encourage people to be able to have a detached garage in the rear with a driveway. And so that the changes that are outlined in the memo, and the graphics that are in front of the commission, were also, I believe, mailed out to citizens. So that is, is some background, I can, I'd be happy to, we can go into more detail later, but I think now it'd be, makes sense for us to get some feedback from the public, unless the commissioners have other questions.
I agree. Yes, if everyone would give speaker slips to Ms. G, she'll pass them up. That's what I thought you meant, I didn't-
Yeah, right. Because usually it's no feedback, I didn't know.
Right. No, that's only the work session.
Yeah, I know, but I was just making sure.
Okay, this is an informal session. In our, in our work sessions, we don't generally allow questions from the audience, but this is a different situation. We want to hear everything you're thinking and about this particular proposal. It's not carved in stone, so we have time to amend it before passage, and we'd like to really hear what you think, and if you, when you come up, if you have a question of staff or of us, we'd be happy to answer them if we can. So our first, first speaker slip is John Wyant. Even though you're in the W's, John, you're first.
Once in a while, it helps reverse the alphabet. I'm John Wyant, I live at 112 West Greenway Boulevard, where I moved in 1976. So I'm one of the older residents, and longer-time residents on the block, and have watched its, its transformation, I think largely for the better. I wouldn't drop largely. It's, it's, it's all been for the better. But in looking at the, at the plate that was sent out to us, I said, my house doesn't fit in that either. fit in that either." And I think my lot is, I've been told, is four feet narrower than it should have been. I'm brick construction, one of three houses built somewhere between 1939 and 1942 before the cinder block construction. And I guess the fact that we've lived there 37 years is that we've made accommodation with living within a house, which my late wife used to say was a perfect model for the 21st century called "living well within your means," because you couldn't build anything on it, and we didn't feel like moving. But I'm encouraged by the proposals. What I did not see would be the consequent effect of, of a tear-down and what that might do in terms of, of construction of new property and how that might alter the thing. That was my principal concern. I love the street. I'd love what it's been for more than a third of a century for us, and I'm encouraged by all the modifications that have been done, and the people have transformed houses into one that even sold for just shy under $1 million. But when I paid $55,000 for my house, I never anticipated I'd be in a high-rant industry. That's my views. I love the street. I see these generally as good things, help people to build porches and things like that. My only concern is, is, is the implications of, of these changes if we have basically a tear-down and build a new property.
Well, that's a good question. Jim?
Well, one of the, it's a very good question. One of the changes would be that you would not be able to go to 35 feet as you can in the rest of the RB zone. And the thought behind that is, since the buildings could come closer to 20 feet, you don't want that ability to have a house looming. Plus, it doesn't seem as though it's necessary to have that much height anyway. So it would be restricted to 30 feet, and you would be aligning with the building restriction line. Front porches could be allowed. I mean, it will feel more like, I think, what they call a new urbanism neighborhood, even though it's a, it's a mature neighborhood with porches and, and short front yards.
My wife's word for it was, "It's a clunky neighborhood, but we love it." Because it's got all kinds of houses. It doesn't look like, it doesn't look like a development.
If there were a tear-down in new construction, they could have variation on the side yard and possibly have a rear garage and driveway on one side. But if there was a garage in the building in the front, it could only be one garage wide, not two, too wide. So allowing that possibility, but keeping it to one car, I believe, a maximum of 10 feet.
The final sort of question I had, I wasn't certain whether this changes the amount of ground that can be covered.
It would not change the total amount. It would allow, I believe, 30% for the lot coverage, but the impervious coverage would stay the same. That would, the lots are smaller. That would allow people, for example, to do the, more able to do the garage in the rear. Also, I think we're suggesting that people should use rain barrels and other kinds of things to help hold water. And new buildings that were close would have to have fireproof construction on the side because the buildings are close together, and our fire marshal thinks that would be a very good safety move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Mary Beth Connolly. I live at 204 West George Mason Road, right in the center of Greenway Downs. And I do appreciate what you're doing and thinking about. I think that the on-street parking, and it feels kind of squishy in the evenings, but as John said, we kind of like it that way. It sort of makes it feel like home. One of my concerns with the driveways going to the back and parking in the rear that you're trying to encourage, that neighborhood is all on a hill, so I think that's tricky to, like, the way my house is situated, there's no way we could put a drive, a garage in the back because it slopes down that way. And the way Tori's house is situated on the other side of the hill, there's no way she could put a garage there either, just because it's, it's a pretty steep hill. And you don't really see that at first, but there are a lot of hills, so I think that it, it may not be practical to expect that a lot of people are going to put standalone garages in the rear of their property. Right now I have, we did an addition about three years ago, and we have a 10-foot, 10 feet between the house and the property line. But there's, I just can't even imagine that we could actually fit a car and a driveway down that 10 feet, just because it seems so tight. So if someone was to put 7 feet there, are you thinking that 7 feet would be appropriate for the driveway side or the not-driveway?
No, I think the notion of 10 feet would give you room for a driveway, depending how, most cars are, are less than 10 feet or 9 feet. Parking space typically 8 and 1/2 to 9 feet. But the thought is, I mean, someone who have the option to do that, wouldn't have to do that, but it would give an ability to get a car off the street and, and to the rear or on the side.
Right. One of the other things is, when we put on our addition, we were only able to put on a tiny front porch because of that by right line, so we call it our porchito, because you can just fit a tiny chair for my key on the front porch, and it would have been so nice to be able to have another 3 feet there to be able to put more furniture. So that part I do like, and I don't think the front yard, you know, having a small front yard, they're already small front yards anyway, so that part I think is fine. And like John, I have the same concern about new constructions, that on Cameron Road, there's a giant new house that's gone in recently, and it fills up the whole front, and what are the, how, how do you say, we want to keep the neighborhood of the same, I don't even, the same sense, the same feeling that you get? And if you have lots of giant houses, that changes that a lot. And because the lots are small, and I appreciate the, the height requirements, but I think that needs to somehow be in, I don't know how you put that in the code.
I don't know the height of the new ones, but the, the zone does theoretically allow this 35 feet, so this would take it down 5 feet.
Right.
That should help some, but most houses are, are a good bit lower, lower than 30 feet as well.
Right. Okay. That's all for now. Thank you.
Janice? Yes, I'm sorry, I...
That's okay. Hello, my name is Janice Tartt, and I live at 203 West Westmoreland Road. And we live on the very end of West Westmoreland Road, next to the, well, not directly next to the runoff, about 2, 2 houses off from the runoff. So our concern is the flood plan and how all the new construction would affect that if anything was considered in that regard. The other, I have 2 other questions. The other question we had was in terms of the height of any garage that we were to build. I think I read in here that it would be limited to 12 feet. Unlike everyone else, that poses a problem for us because we look to garages in terms of storage. And if we can only put a car, one vehicle in, and we can't put anything above in terms of, you know, going up a little higher, that would pose a problem in terms of storage in that area, because you can't dig too much deeper because of the whole flooding issues. And then this is just a personal thing in terms of the design of the garage space, the garage door. I think there was something in the documents about what type of door in terms of aesthetics. I don't understand why that would be a problem, and if you could explain that. That's all I have.
Do you, do you, do you need any answers to those questions? Those are just your concerns? Okay, we'll certainly keep those in mind.
I'm sure Leslie enjoys spending her birthday with us tonight.
Hi, I'm Rich Butler. I live at 114 West George Mason Road, just down from Mary Beth. I'm right next to the big empty lot that everybody used to play on or likes to play on. I read this, I have a question about the side setbacks as well, because what I was reading is that the average lots are 60 feet wide, or excuse me, 50 feet wide. And with 10 feet on each side, which is the normal setback, that would leave 30 feet. And in here it says that you want to set them back more, you know, give them, give them more width so that, to accommodate the average width of a house of 30 feet, which to me seems like we already have 30 feet. And my concern is, particularly with the new construction, there's an empty lot next to me, and I know my neighbor and I, we've stepped off how close a house that's going to be built there would be, and it's, 7 feet is really small. And I, I guess my question is, what's the, what's the logic that we need an extra 3 feet when we can already get a 30-foot house, 30-foot width house according to the material that's been handed out on a 50-foot wide lot?
I think some of the concerns we'd heard was that 30 feet was not as, was not wide enough to get an appropriate modern house, but that's, so, a little additional width would be helpful. And I think that, that's where the 17 feet comes from. But of course, it's important to hear what, what folks in the neighborhood think about that idea, because that would be a change. Would give an additional 3 feet.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't like it, but I think I've made that clear. The other question I have is on the width of the driveways. What I was reading is that the driveways can't be any wider than the garages, and there's already a fair amount of protection there for the impervious zones, you know, the impervious ground. And I guess one of my questions is, is this going to cover everybody who lives in Greenway Downs or just the substandard lots of Greenway Downs?
It was designed to cover the area within the overlay district, which would include everything that's mapped in the, in the drawings. Now, you know, larger lots, if there are larger lots, you know, they, they would have more flexibility than the smaller lots because of their additional size.
And I guess on that, like, my driveway, I don't have a garage. And that's the other thing, is, I mean, I've kind of walked the neighborhood once I got this. I don't see the space where anybody, like Mary Beth was saying, there's almost, almost, unless you have one there, it's almost impossible to get a garage in the back of your house like this one depiction was showing, just because of where the houses are and how much room you have between your house and the end of your lot line. And, you know, the, trying to get something back behind there.
Well, we're not saying you have to put a driveway in.
I, I understand that, but it seems to me like part of this reason was we want to get cars off the street, which is great on the one hand. On the other hand, we get a lot of people flying through there, and sometimes I feel like the cars slow them all down. I mean, it's kind of, I'd love to see the cars off the street, but I don't want to see people flying through there. You know, and I understand it's, they don't want to put it in there. My concern is, is, you know, the side setbacks and then the restrictions on the driveways, because I think a wider driveway, to some extent, you might be able to get more cars off the roadway, you know, off the, off the road if you had a wider driveway wider than your garage. And I think a lot of this really more speaks to the new construction. And, you know, my only concern is, am I, are we opening the door to more? Because when I read this and it kind of talked like, hey, there's not a lot of new construction. We did an addition, I know the Connollys did one. Across the street, there's a total tear-down that's, that's just about done. To my right, there's another house that was a total tear-down about 3 years ago. So there is a lot of construction going on in the neighborhood, even though we have these restrictions on these lots. And I, I don't know what the, what the impetus was to even kind of, I don't know if anything was broken that we needed to fix.
Right, so you're saying you think everything is fine. Well, there was an impetus. Do you want to say what, what that was and why we decided that we should even think about this?
Yes, I think one of the concerns was that people who had houses were, were somewhat stymied because of the front setback, the inability to put porches on or a second story because the buildings were at 20 feet rather than 25 feet. And so they'd have to get, request a variance, which was not typically permitted. Also, since this would have an impact on new houses, presently, they operate under the rules, the existing rules, so you could have, for example, a 2-car garage in the front, and you have, I think, some maybe that have done that. We're trying to not have the whole frontage of the lot be a driveway that reduces on-street parking. So it's, it's, it's trying to balance an ability to have a, a, if new houses are built, that they're built to a, to a height and a street frontage that is more compatible with the community, and then also giving those who have existing houses more flexibility to add porches and other features that they presently might be unable to. So it's trying to provide more flexibility. The real impetus, I think, it was identified in the ZOAC report, being a neighborhood that should be rezoned to, and a new zone created. Our thought was that that would be a, a big change and might even put a stigma on, you know, that neighborhood with a different zone than the R1B, which it's always been. And so we thought a set of rules that would allow flexibility for the group of houses in that subdivision, which are very, very similar, would be the best approach. And that's, that was, it's an effort to follow up on one of the key ZOAC recommendations.
Okay. I mean, I, just some feedback, is I, I don't like the houses with the entire front as the driveway either, and I haven't, luck, we've been fortunate that nobody's done that with the tear-downs in our neighborhood at all just yet, so that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Butler.
Hi, I'm Jeff Farshin. I live on the other side of the vacant lot. I'm at 118...
You 2 are ganging up on us, are you?
Yes, I'm at 118 West George Mason Road, and I too obviously have a, a problem with the 7-foot side setback. Totalling 17 feet, to me, seems like whoever builds first wins, so I don't like that. The other thing is, is on the map, you drew stars on all the houses that include, they're within the 10-foot, and I'd like to say my house is within the 10 feet. And I have twin boys, and we're happy. So as far as modern houses and so on, I, I believe you can get a modern house in that footprint. And I have to say, I'm, I'm glad you're saying fire-resistant materials. I mean, I know a lot of building these days are twigs, and they go up fast, so. I mean, those are my main, my main concerns are those, that side setback, because I am 10 feet on the other side. Obviously, it's a vacant lot on one side, but my neighbor, I measured it today, I've measured it before, I'm 10-foot from that fence, and it is tight, so. 7 would feel very cozy, too cozy for me. I can understand the front setback change. I mean, if you want to be closer to the street and hear the noise, you can certainly do Those are, the main concern for me is that side setback, especially with new construction, which I know they're probably going to do in that lot since that lot has sold, so. That's my, my main thing that I, that I'm not too happy about was, was that. And then it just says, I guess the, the ruling on it, you know, the 10-foot, I can understand because it's 10-foot for both people, both parties, whereas if a new construction comes in, I could guarantee they're going to push that envelope. And the people who are existing are going to, well, feel short-changed, you know? So if I ever did want to build and I wanted to take that 7-foot, not that I would, and I can honestly say we probably never will, but I think it would go against my feelings saying, oh, well, my neighbor beat me to it, so.
Yeah.
I have concern on that one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have another one.
Hello, Helen Young, 124 West Cameron Road. I have a house looming over my house. It was built about 3 or 4 years ago. And I'm lucky I have a 10-foot right-of-way, city right-of-way next to me, so it doesn't seem so painful, but it'd be nice if the house could have been... But it'd be nice if the house could've been a little bit shorter. But that wasn't my question. My question is, I know that the floodplain recently in the City of Falls Church changed a few years ago, and I think it's kind of grown. And I know West Westmoreland Road, the floodplain used to be, the house in back of us used to be kind of in the road of West Westmoreland, and now it's halfway between their property and our backyard. So I'm just kinda wondering, how does a floodplain affect this proposed overlay?
I don't know that there's a specific relation. We are sensitive to the flood issues here in the city. And one of the recommendations was to encourage rain barrels, pervious paving, and other features to help, to help offset that. There has been, I guess, some question as to whether or not that should be encouraged, but, you know, required. And so I don't have a specific answer on, I don't know that there's any particular effect in terms of the floodplain and this. But we were sensitive to the flooding and stormwater issues in terms of suggesting that people install rain barrels and pervious paving to offset that to some extent.
I was subject to the impression that houses in the floodplain were kind of limited into kind of home improvements that they could do. So if a house is in the floodplain, can they have the flexibility of putting a porch on the front if it's less than?
If, if you were in a, in something which is in one of the Chesapeake Bay areas, it would have to go through a grading plan. That would be part of the analysis of whether or not, what, was there a portion of the lot that was in that, what's called a resource protection area? That would be looked at as a part of that, that review of a, of a new structure.
But existing structures? Would they, would they be limited from taking advantage of this new flexibility and, and putting up, like I said, a front porch?
I don't know that it would affect front porches, but possibly if you're going toward the stream and you were in the RPA, that could possibly be an effect. We'd have to look at the specific property. We could ask that question of our public work staff in terms of the potential interplay of the, of the floodplain and any construction on houses. I don't believe it would affect the ability to do front porches, though.
And, and I, and I don't think this would cover that. I think each of those instances would be separate. I mean, this, this overlay would not address that. So if you were in a, in a, I mean, this is my impression of that. If you're in a floodplain, you have to go through a different process than just putting on a front porch. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct. Also, in response to the last gentleman, the stars that were put there on those maps, one of the thoughts was to allow people who have existing houses to be able to expand their house to the rear while retaining that same existing setback. One of the things we've heard tonight is that concern about new houses being built with that less than ten-feet setback. So I think that possibly something could be changed in the ordinance, for example.
Tori McKinnon?
Hi, my name's Tori McKinnon. I live at two zero six West Greenway, a neighbor of John Wyatt, the troublemaker. First of all, I think it's fantastic that the city is considering our neighborhood and trying to promote it. And thank you all who have been involved with the project so far. I have one comment about the whole driveway garage thing. Putting a garage all the way at the back like it's suggested would give us nearly a hundred-foot driveway, which backing up from the garage out to the street would be quite a feat. So I don't know that that's gonna be a selling point necessarily. I mean, maybe we just stick with sheds and, you know, get our storage that way. But truthfully, driving that far in and then having it back that far out. And then shoveling if we ever do get snow. But I have to say that the, the setback suggestion is somewhat appealing to me on a personal level. Sirhan, a local builder and neighbor of mine, helped me design a pantry, little wing off of our kitchen. And when all was said and done, we were only gonna end up with like two feet. It wasn't gonna be really that much. So maybe with this new setback, we might actually get a substantial pantry. So anyway, so I think, I, I do like the overall thought process and the design of what's being proposed. But I think that the, the whole hundred-foot driveway thing is pretty unrealistic. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Teresa Twyford?
Hello, again, Teresa Twyford, four one four Park. So I don't live in Greenway Downs, but just sitting here, listening and thinking about the project that I'm hoping to do and the, the pervious and impervious issue. I'm just wanting to propose the possibility of driveways being a pervious substance. Would that be able to be written in the code? I can just imagine, like Tori was saying, these hundred-long, you know, blacktop strips as opposed to something where the grass can grow up, the concrete, pavers where the grass can grow up in between. Flexibility, not for just flexibility's sake, but flexibility in thinking about what really makes a better community. I think the front porches are fantastic. That really does make for a better community. So those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you. Cam? Cam?
No, it's Carl.
Oh, Carl, sorry. Sorry. You're well-known by other commissioners, but not by me, I'm sorry.
Carl Kikuchi, two eighteen West Greenway. I just wanted to echo the sentiments about the pervious and impervious surfaces. I think if, if you think that the, the net of this would be to increase the building coverage or the impervious surfaces on the lots, then, or the driveway surfaces on the lots, then there ought to be some kind of action taken to counteract that, to encourage people to use pervious driveway surfaces or do some landscaping that will limit and control runoff and those kinds of things. I think that's only responsible, given that it's, a lot of these lots are in the floodplain and in the RPA area, so.
Very, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have been thinking a lot about the pervious, impervious. We also thought possibly, and we haven't really seen this happen, but front porches offer the potential for someone to put what they call a bladder or a storage, water storage area underneath it. That could collect water coming off of downspouts. It's a way to help hold, hold water. So I think it's a very interesting topic, particularly for this area near Trips Run.
Seeing no further speaker slips? Do the commissioners have any comments to the, the speakers? Where are the listeners?
I guess what I'm, I'm looking at is definitely there's a real consensus that they don't wanna see that seventeen-foot setback, the seven-ten, that they wanna keep the ten-ten. And so that keeps the width of the house at thirty. And, you know, having driven through that neighborhood and my subject, most of those houses are at thirty feet, and they do seem like normal, regular houses. Like there's not, I don't know if three feet's gonna give that much of a difference. I've always thought all along that the biggest thing to fix was that front setback. Because to have a house at twenty, but you're only allowed to build to twenty-five, meant that no one could put a second story in that align with the front of their house, which just to me leads itself to someone tearing down a house and rebuilding it because it's easier. So I think that's really important. But, but I definitely think we have to look at the ten-foot. And then I, I also heard concern about new houses being too large and maybe we should really think about that change to thirty percent, going from twenty-five percent to thirty, that maybe we don't need to do that as well. So those are the two big ones I think I heard.
Thank you, Melissa. Anyone else? Rob?
So you, so the whole, I, I just can't remember because it's been so long. What was the, so you can't get a variance to go to seven feet? Is that correct? If you hypothetically had a pantry or you wanted to just do a dining room bump out?
Well, existing, a lot of the existing houses, the ones with stars, don't match the ten and ten. And so if you wanted to add back or, you know, it makes additions difficult if you have an existing house in that setback. On the front side, as Melissa mentioned, you can't go up and you can't have a porch except for a skinny one. And so those were some of, it, it results in design issues.
So, but there was a, a logic to the ten and seven, having to do, in my mind, with the, the inability to get a variance in a pantry or some other situation. It wasn't necessarily new construction that we were?
I think it was, it was trying to allow a situation, particularly where you had existing buildings that didn't meet the standard, to have more flexibility because many of them are less than ten feet. It might be possible, for example, to, to have something which would have a certain standard for new, you know, tear downs and new construction, that they had to meet a certain standard versus something that's already there. We could look into that possibility. We were trying to provide some more flexibility for people to, to remodel the existing homes without everything being a tear down.
Right, so you're saying that some of the houses now only have a seven-foot side setback?
Quite a few of them. I, I think that the ones that have stars on them are, they have buildings within that set, that ten-foot side yard.
And so if something should happen to those houses, if they were a tear down, then the new homes would have to comply with the ten-foot setback. But if there's something happened to the house on, on that property with a seven-foot setback, say there was a fire or a tree fell on their house, would they be able to construct back to the original footprint?
In theory, depending on how much was, was, how much of destruction there was. I think there's a percentage destruction.
Yeah, I think that was one of the concerns that we had when we were looking at it, as far zoning is concerned. Because we were concerned that, you know, something happens to your house, then when you went to rebuild, you could not, you couldn't have the same house or you couldn't even have nearly the same house. And so we were, that was one of the reasons we were looking at this, to kind of prevent that from happening.
It would be the front yard setback as well, I believe.
Yeah. I think the way the code reads is like twenty percent of the house has to remain. If, if you lose more than that, then you can't keep your footprint, you can't grandfather it in, you have to go to.
But now that I think about, any, anything, if your house should burn down to the foundation and you start it with the foundation, and we, we put this particular overlay into law, then you would, you would have to go to the, go back to the ten-foot setback if it burned down more than?
Well, and as it's presently written, and of course, it's just a draft.
Right.
There wasn't a distinction between new and existing. But what we're hearing from people is they're concerned about new houses being closer than ten feet. And so it might be possible we could write something so that new houses would meet the ten and ten and provide some flexibility for additions for existing ones. We'd have to research that.
Right, okay.
We also had a limit on the accessory buildings. I don't think presently the code has that. But we're looking at trying to keep them within about a ten percent of the lot size. So they're not, the accessory doesn't become bigger than the house.
Good. Lyndy, did you?
Yeah, thanks. I think our whole reason for doing this is started with the ZOAC study and just the fact that we're looking at standard and substandard lots between the two residential zoning areas. And with the, everything in that entire Greenway, not everything, but most of that entire Greenway subdivision was substandard lots, which made your life a little bit more difficult to do anything with them. And I think our whole idea is not to make your life more difficult, but to make it less difficult to do second, particularly second story, that was really a biggie, and anything in the front. So I know we'll be looking very carefully at things and making sure we don't make your lives more difficult as a result of anything that might be done from here.
Did you have something?
I kept thinking, my mind kept going back to the driveway issue and I would just wanted to find out, are we flexible on that at all? In terms of pulling the driveway forward a little bit to give them, you know, you know, because I had the same concerns about how do you back out of that? Is it a hundred-foot long driveway?
I don't like that.
Is there any way we can attach the garage to the house?
Depend on how much.
Well, the, the, the code, as, as suggested, would certainly permit a one-car garage and a driveway in the front of the house. So that's the most direct way to get a garage and a, and driveway. Sometimes it's, some people wanna have a garage behind the, the house itself. So the illustration shows how one could be done, put in the back corner. But you also could conceive we have a driveway that went into a side-loaded garage in the, toward the rear of the house. So it would really be something that there'd be flexibility in terms of how people would wanna use it. It was thought that ten feet was kind of the minimum you'd need to be able to get a vehicle through and back to the backyard. So you always have the option to have the front garage and front driveway. But we were trying to limit it to one-car garage. The code only requires one-car parking off-street per single-family house. So you only, if you're building a new house, only have to have parking for one car off-street. And it does not have to be in a garage.
Andy, did you have anything?
Quick follow-up to that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Quick follow-up to that. The idea of that long driveway just begins to ring dollar signs in my, in my head, you know? Because if you have to do impervious surface, that's more expensive, I think, than, you know, going with asphalt. So, you know, you have a extra expenditure when you're putting up a house in that area.
It's, it's certainly, it certainly could be more expensive. It, you know, in, in previous years, there are a lot of older houses in the community that have detached garages. And more recent years, people are tending to put them all together, build a bigger house and put the garage in the house.
Andy, did you have anything? I noticed someone in the audience, John, did you wanna say something else?
I have a question that's come up.
Come on, come on up. I didn't say that.
What did she say?
This friend.
John Wyatt, yeah, the question is, when does a porch become a permanent structure in terms of, of this? When I bought my house in nineteen seventy-six, it had a kind of cruddy deck on the side that went within a foot of the property line. So it's right next to my neighbor's driveway. And because it was there in the original agreement and built with, with a, an exception at time, I was allowed to replace that part of the deck, but I was not allowed to put anything up that substantially was like a roof. And in fact, I had to have, on the sunscreen, I had to have, I think, sixteen inches or twenty inches between the, the, the sunscreens. So the question comes, if you build a porch, can you enclose the porch? If you build a deck, can you enclose the deck? Because I didn't see anything in there with a definition that takes you from a, a kind of North Florida porch to a Minnesota porch, which might have.
I think the concept would be an open front porch that would be allowed to go beyond the twenty feet. Could not, it could have a roof.
Can have a roof.
And it could have.
Pillars.
Pillars, but it wouldn't be enclosed and become enclosed space. And the notion is really try to promote a covered area that people enjoy both inside.
Now, could that conceivably be, have a, a roof put on my deck?
Well, then you'd be in that side yard setback area. And that would be a problem.
Well, maybe half the setback would be roof and the other. No, I didn't want to raise that, other than I was thinking, you know?
Retractable awning is probably your best.
It is what you could actually define as a porch. So that, I think anything that clarifies.
Porch would have columns and.
Well, it has to be an open space.
That's the concept.
The code actually defines porches pretty clearly, that the zoning code defines what a porch is. And it's really clear and it, it cannot be enclosed, so. And it's really clear, and it, it cannot be enclosed. So...
I thought for a moment you were talking about porches, and I said, I'd love to have one in front.
Yeah.
Well, that comes with the overlay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Umbrellas.
Well-
We seem to have no more comments from either the commissioners or the speakers. And I just want to thank everyone for coming out. This was a great discussion. We learned a lot. And we will be discussing this again, and you will be seeing it again. If, one, when changes are made, if changes are made. And two, if we're going to go forward with asking for this to be encoded. One more speaker? Okay.
But no, as far as, Melissa, you mentioned that the general feedback was to not relax the side setbacks. And I don't think it was general. I think it was sort of split from what I heard in the room. So I just wanted us to leave, I didn't want us to leave with that notion, because I really do want a bigger pantry.
No, I understand, but it, it did seem like it came up multiple times. It's something we need to look at.
It did, but I think the one thing also we did see was that there was-
Okay.
Well, then maybe the thing to do would be to put your comments in writing. You know, take one or two of the, of the issues that you really feel strongly about and list them and send us a letter. We'd be happy to read them.
One thing I would like to do is thank Deborah G., who did the outreach and mailing, and Garrison Kitt, who did all the analysis and the sketch-up models, and John Boyle, who worked with him on the research for the, the overlay district and the subdivision itself. This has been very valuable. We really appreciate the community coming out. We weren't sure if we'd have people to listen to, and it's great that you did come out and tell us your thoughts. We'll be taking those, along with the commission's thoughts, and coming up with a refined proposal that will go to the city council, probably in a work session with the planning commission. And then depending on what they decide, could be coming back for a first or second reading. And then there'd be a whole nother chance for people to, to respond to this idea with more detail. So thank you all for coming out. We really appreciate it. And thanks for the staff who worked so hard to get this together.
Oh, yes. Well, that's, that's for the BZA. We don't do variances. Yeah, I think so.
Well, it has to be almost like, it has to, you have to show it's a hardship. That's actually the, the term, the state. It has to be a hardship. So like her pantry-
So pantries wouldn't qualify.
They would not consider a pantry to be a hardship, but if you came in and said-